Meeting to order. Dylan. That dedication, please.
Pray. Idents. Our nation. There we pray also. Also be with the first responders. Serve the public.
The Legion.
Flag. United States of America. To the Republic of which you stand. One nation, under God. Invisible liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the planning committee commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. Decision made on rezoning and variance request tonight will be forwarded to the commissioners for final action on March 5th, 2024. If you wish to address the board of commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Dollar to obtain a request to speak for them. Any request with a public hearing will have a minimum of 10 minutes permitted per side for the presentation of opinions, data, and evidence by proponents or opponents of a request. The applicant will be allowed to speak first, and any member of the public may speak after. Either side may cede their time during the hearing if they so desire. Do you have a quorum? I need a motion for the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved.
All in favor? I need a motion for the approval of the agenda. All in favor? Um, before we begin, I'd like to introduce Ryan Cato, District 4. He replaces the late, great Al Dempsey, our former chairman. Welcome aboard, Ryan. Also Commissioner Connie Malier would like to address.
Thank you, thank you for your time. In honor of our former chairman, who is no longer with us, there's been prepared a proclamation, and I would like to read it into the minutes of this meeting, if it pleases the chairman.
So be it.
Thank you. Whereas John Allen Dempsey Jr., affectionately known as Al, was a lifelong resident of Columbia County, born on October 16th, 1945. And whereas, after graduating from Evans High School and serving in the Navy, Al returned to Columbia County where he owned and operated several successful businesses. And whereas, Al was a servant leader and invested his time in the county he loved so much. And in 1981, Al was elected to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners and went on to serve two terms, several years of which he served as chairman of that board. Whereas, Al also volunteered his time and services on county boards and committees to which he was appointed, including most recently the Board of Health and this very planning commission. And whereas, Al will long be remembered as a loyal and dedicated man by all who had the great fortune of knowing him. Now therefore, the Columbia County Board of Commissioners will hereby recognize his public service to the citizens of Columbia County and join him in honoring the life and memory of John Allen Dempsey Jr. on Tuesday, March 5th, 2024. Thank you for allowing me to publicly recognize him and honor him in his years of service. And I hope that all of you will take the time on that Tuesday to come join us in honoring his family, who will be here for the official reading of the proclamation when it's presented and approved. And anybody here who knew Al or just curious about it would like to come, we would love to have you on that day or at any commission meeting. Thank you so much for your time, gentlemen.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Will Butler.
Lady Sheriff's request for a rezoning for a portion of property on High Meadows Drive, rezoned as S1 special for proposed telecommunications tower. Those location of the property that we're going to be dealing with tonight, so we're also going to have a variance request as well with this. We have two separate items before you, but again, we'll take the rezoning first. You can show the location of the property off High Meadows Drive. And you can currently zone RA Residence Agricultural. This is owned by the county, as is this property here. Air review of the site that we'll be looking at tonight, and also location of the property, showing the entrance into it. And the plat of the property. So what we're dealing with is a 60 by 60 lease area for a proposed 199-foot-high tower. Again, that is over the height of it, the height of the tower is over the 150 limit, so we'll be discussing variance to that. We're not talking about that with the rezoning at this current time. It shows the lease area. Again, the separation from the property lines is over, it's 200 feet at a minimum. Needs building setbacks. In terms of the application, they've given us everything that was required for that. I'm not going to go into what all that is. It's quite a few things. One of the things that was kind of outstanding with this was a balloon test that was performed, I believe, last month. Again, this does show the tower itself. Again, we're dealing with, you know, three different antennas on there. Again, the first one is going to be one for T-Mobile. And again, this does show the height of the tower itself. And again, concept plan pretty normal for a cell tower. And you have the actual fence itself, and you have, you know, the compound that's in there, and then also the equipment pad and all that. Again, very typical. And again, we're only rezoning on the portion that's the lease area, not the whole property. Again, in terms of a rezoning for something like this, we're looking at the coverage maps, you know, how does it impact that? You know, is it an actual needed service, we'll say. Again, without the proposed site, you do see that there's, you have some, again, the colors here, the green is the residential coverage. If you're inside a house, that's where the coverage happens, and also you have in-vehicle, which is as described. Again, without the, with, without the proposed site, this is what it looks like currently. And then when you have the site put into place at the 145, meeting the 150 height requirement, there is an improvement in that, and pretty clear to see in this situation. So again, that is one factor with it. Again, so photo simulations, you do have, from High Meadows, you're going to be able to see it, again, it's proposed 199 feet high. But then when you start going around the site itself, you know, close to it with High Meadows, you can't really see anything from those locations. You have some views of it in the more densely developed areas of the property or of the area. Again, this kind of shows what it would look like at that 199. In terms of future development, there is not really a named, here's where cell towers go in the comp plan. But again, it's one of those things that's increasingly become a, something you have to have for daily life. You know, it can pretty much go pretty much anywhere in the county. It becomes a question of aesthetics, height, that sort of thing. Again, with the rezoning request side of it, we see no issues with the request itself. I mean, it's pretty typical to have a cell tower within a neighborhood's character area. So no problems from that standpoint, and staff recommends approval of the request for the rezoning to S1. That includes staff recommendation.
An applicant present, Mr. John? John? Come forward and state your name and address.
Good evening, I'm Matt Tania-John, 935 Main Street, Suite C4, Safety Harbor, Florida 34695. I do have a, as a point of order, I'd like to reserve two minutes for rebuttal in case it's needed. And I have a PowerPoint presentation, but basically everything I was going to show you was already shown to you. If we could switch to it, I'd like to just show the RF maps again. And I'd also like to clarify that the design of this tower is a monopole style communication tower. It's dull gray, has a single support pole, so you don't have the iron works that you see coming out of some of the older towers. And you'll be completely dark at night. The other thing to keep in mind, if we could just move a little bit forwards. I know that it was shown earlier that, you know, there's a county property on the other side of Chamberlain Road. When you look and compare the properties, I'm on a parcel that's in the middle of a, in the middle of mature tree canopy. And so that helps add to the buffering, and that's why it's so hard to see it, especially from misty drive. And then if we could just go to the coverage maps. We do meet and exceed your code required 100% tower height setback, and when you start measuring to nearby houses, it jumps up from there. Your minimum separation is 1.6, the minimum separation this provides is 1.6 times. Like I said, this will be designed for colocation. The only way I could get higher on your code's priority is if you already had a tower on that property, because then your code would tell me to collocate. You've seen the photo simulations, that was all part of your packet. The nearest towers are located over two miles away, that's pretty far for residential, are pretty far for providing coverage. And basically, cellphone signals work the same, are inherently local. They work just like those lights over your head. You need an array of lights to light your dais. If we start moving lights away, you're going to get dark spots. Same thing with cell towers. If you make it shorter, you're going to cover a smaller area, and that's the philosophy behind the variance I'll be before you. And that's all I have. I'm available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience in favor of this? Anyone in the audience opposed and would like to speak? Do I have a motion? Approval? Or denial?
Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval of file RZ 23-12-07, zoning from RA to S1 for .08 acres. Portion of property at 5019 High Meadows Drive for a cell tower.
Second? All in favor? Be it. Butler?
All right, so moving on to the variances, the request to, a variance to Section 18-308, height of telecommunications tower, so we're in a 199-foot-high tower. This is at 5019 High Meadows Drive. Again, we've already seen the location of the property and the current zoning. Also the aerial view of the site, location, and the plat, and the concept plan, again, showing it in the middle of the site essentially. And again, showing the actual site, or the plan itself for the development. And the coverage maps without the proposed site, so let's kind of go back with kind of how we can get more height out of a tower. So there's different ways to do that. One of them is with, you know, showing how it works for the, how the coverage works. That's not really the only thing you need to be using, but that is one avenue to get more height. You also have, basically looking at, you know, the topography of the ground itself, that sort of thing. So this is one that they've approached a little differently. They've looked at the coverage area, and they've also looked at our code itself, a little unique aspect to that. And I'll kind of get into that here in a moment. Let me talk about the coverage maps themselves. Again, without the proposed site is what it is at this point. When you have it at 145, AKA 150, you see an improvement to the area. Again, you have, the green is the good, and that's what you want to see. When you go up to 190, again, even more green, it moves over into, like Bartsam Trail has it now. So again, the coverage is certainly improved. I mean, again, it gets higher, it's going to have improved coverage, and that's pretty simple to explain. In terms of how they've gone about it, though, with their request, they've also looked at, you know, how our code wants cell towers to proceed with an application. You know, one of the things that's very clear in it, it does say that the first, the first thing you need to be looking at is to collocate, you know, go find an existing tower. That's our first priority. Again, not really able to happen in this. But then the second priority is, let's go build a tower at that point. So again, that's what we're trying to do here in this situation. The other part of that, too, is that, you know, we talk about aesthetics quite a bit with the, our code, and it's one that we're very mindful of that, but at the same time, you have to be mindful of providing service as well. So again, there's going to be some discussion here in a minute about that. But overall, the argument presented by the applicant is that there needs to be more towers, or less, excuse me, less towers, to meet the requirement to not have as many, have more colocates. And staff's in agreement with that. It's one that that's a good argument to present. It's one that our code is definitely going in that direction. Hasn't really been presented before. Everybody's kind of relied on coverage maps and rolling the dice. So a good argument from that standpoint. So in terms of the photo sims, we've already seen them before. Again, we do want to say that, yes, taking into the aesthetics doesn't really say that you can have carte blanche to basically put towers where you want. It's more of a, let's be mindful of what's around it. You know, again, the photo simulation here, like, well, it's been, hasn't brought up lots of tree coverage. Again, misty meadows, or, excuse me, yes, misty meadows, same thing with that development, not really easy to see. And same, same thing here as well. You know, you get on misty woods. Then when you get into the more developed areas of High Meadows, it can be seen, but at the same time, it's the argument of, well, you're providing services for more people. There's going to be some trade-off in this situation. So again, there is going to be some of that. Now, I do want to mention on the next one with Clari, that Clari is brand new. There's going to be more trees growing up around that development, so again, it may actually be better for them long-term. But again, overall, excuse me, one more picture of Clari. But again, overall, the fact that, you know, our code does kind of look at having less towers essentially, that's kind of the overall theme, you know, going a little higher makes some sense. There is kind of a, we've kind of brought up a few times, we think there is kind of a max height, if you want to go that way, in there. With a statement about lighting, once you go over 200 feet, there's requirement to have lighting from the FAA typically. We don't want you to light towers. There's one that if you're looking at more of a suburban or urban area, there's probably a height limit of 200 feet. Get further out into the RA side of town, the west end of the county, where there's less people, you got to go higher, you might have to light it. That's where you can kind of get into that, that argument as well. Overall, staff recommends approval of the variance. That includes staff recommendation.
Applicant like to come forward again? Yes, she needs to state her name and address again.
We know it, but we'll go ahead and throw it again.
Matt Tania-John, 935 Main Street, Suite C4, Safety Harbor, Florida 34695. And for the sake of my malpractice insurance carrier, I'm going to say I'm reserving two minutes at the end for any questions. Anyways, if we could go back to the photo simulations, you know, when you look at the design of this, yes, there's visibility. I don't have the Romulan cloaking device. If I did, I wouldn't have student loans. However, the design of the tower versus like what you would see outside the county building with those lattice towers minimizes the visual presence. So it really is that trade-off of providing coverage and having fewer tower structures versus having more shorter towers. So we were, your code anticipates that this can be adjusted up to 200 feet via the variance process. That's what I'm in here for. And I'm just showing you with the RF propagation maps that, given the outlay of the area, the way the area is developed, I would respectfully submit that this would be a logical thing to do, because, you know, you are in a more active area. You are on a county property that's next to a water plant, that's south of the fairgrounds, as opposed to trying to find some other place as you move out into residential areas to put a second tower. And that's really the thought process behind it. With that, we would respectfully request that you recommend approval of the variance as well. I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Real quick.
Yes, sir.
These are, these heat maps, are they just based on T-Mobile's heat map, or is it all heat map, all frequencies?
No, this is T-Mobile. This is made-
This is just T-Mobile?
Correct.
Gotcha.
If you were to look at heat maps based on carriers that are lower on the tower, you would see smaller coverage areas. It's the same, it goes back to my example of the lights. If you bring the light closer to the floor, the smaller area it covers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody in the audience would like to speak in favor? Is anyone in the audience that would like to speak opposed to this request? I need a recommendation of approval or disapproval?
I make a motion to recommend approval with conditions. While PA 23-12-08, variance to Section 18-308, to increase the allowed height of a cell tower to 199 feet. 5019 High Meadows Drive.
Second?
Just real quick point of clarification. Staff didn't recommend any conditions, so if there are any, have to let us know what those might be. So if, if there are, just trade approval.
Trade approval with no conditions.
Is that what your motion is then? Okay.
All in favor?
Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Nina?
Sir, this is a major revision to a PUD zoning. The location is 501 Oxbow Drive on 1.06 acres. Current zoning is PUD, and it requests is for commercial uses. This is the location at the intersection of Columbia Road and Long Creek Falls, front of Ivy Falls. Here's a zoning map. The blue on the south side of Columbia Road is the Ivy Falls zoning that was approved in 1994, with some commercial uses on the front of that property. Here is the aerial that shows the parcel that's undeveloped at the moment, and it is across Oxbow Drive that has some commercial uses. And some photographs of the site. Parcel. This is the plat of the property. The development plan shows a building in, on this parcel. The existing PUD zoning allows a daycare use, and that has been in the PUD from the beginning. That has not been developed up till this time, and there's no demand for that here. So the applicant has requested a PUD revision to build a commercial building similar to the one across Oxbow Drive, that allow retail and commercial uses as per CC, Community Commercial, is as per the allowed use table in the code. This is the architecture proposed, which is very similar to the existing building. You go back one to the site plan. So the, the building is going to sit in the middle of that parcel. There are some parking spaces shown, and the access will be off Oxbow Drive. There's quite a steep slope on the corner of Long Creek Falls, so there'll be landscaping on that and buffering as well. And the architecture will match the commercial building out there. So the future development map shows this as neighborhoods, and typically does not allow commercial uses, but this is, commercial uses there have been in the PUD from the beginning, and the proposed uses won't adversely impact any of the current uses out there, and staff is recommending approval.
Is the applicant, G.B. Sharma, might come forward, please, state your name and your address?
Hey there, Andy Sharma, representing the ownership group. We're proposing to change this. We inherited the project when it was already zoned for daycare. And we've advertised the property for lease, for sale to potential daycare operator-owner. And that hadn't worked out, so with the growing demand in the area and our other two shopping centers that are 100% occupied, we're asking this to be converted to the same commercial as across the street at 501. And I hope to complete this after, I graduated high school here in 94, so that's how old this is getting.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone in the audience in favor of this would like to come forward? Anyone in the audience opposed to this request? I get a motion to approve or disapprove? Have a second? All in favor? Now we'll go to the new business, Ms. Danielle Montgomery.
Yes, sir, this is a preliminary plat revision for Hanover Place off Evans to Locks Road. This is a planned residential development. It was rezoned back in 2016, and actually did make it all the way to final plat back in 2022. They then revised their PRD zoning to add some additional lots, and this is the revision to the preliminary plat to add the additional water taps and such to allow that on the site. So this is the location of this development, here on the north side of Evans to Locks Road. And this was the approved final plat, which was for the 30 single-family lots. We are taking five of those lots and subdividing them to be attached to family dwellings, so essentially adding five lots to the development. So this preliminary plat adds the five additional water taps. It also adds the previous parking on the east side as approved with that PRD revision. And staff is recommending approval.
Any questions? Think, and I get a motion for, to approve or disapprove?
I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat revision to Hanover Place off Evans to Locks Road. A second?
All in favor? Timber Creek, Danielle Montgomery?
Yes, sir, this is the preliminary plat for Timber Creek off Mulliken Road. It is a R1 single-family residential subdivision. This shows the location of the property near the end of Mulliken Road. And the proposed subdivision is for 50 single-family residential lots. The minimum lot size is 30,000 square feet, which meets the requirements for the R1 zoning district, when the lots have access to sewer, which these do. The required setbacks are 65 feet from the center line of the local roads, and 10 feet from the side property lines, and 25 feet from the rear property lines. There is a 25-foot buffer around the perimeter of the development, as well as a 50-foot buffer on Mulliken Road. And there is 13.45 acres of open space in this development. Sidewalks are provided on one side of the road, and a crosswalk is provided to connect to the walking trail on the opposite side of Mulliken Road. And staff is recommending approval.
Questions? I get a motion for approval or disapproval?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Timber Creek off Mulliken Road.
All in favor? Passes? Miss Montgomery?
Yes, sir, this is a final plat for Five Oaks Farm off Mistletoe Road, currently zoned R4 recreational residential. This shows the location of the properties that are to be subdivided. And west side of Mistletoe Road, near the intersection with Winfield Road. And the proposal is to subdivide those tracks into 10 lots with a minimum lot size of five acres. This well exceeds the minimum lot size in R4, which is 40,000 square feet. Most of the lots do have their own road frontage on Mistletoe Road, the exception being Track 9 back here, which uses an existing access easement. The lots do have access to public water, but will be served by individual septic systems, and the soil surveys for each lot will be determined prior to construction. This shows free view of the existing site. And staff is recommending approval.
Any questions? Can I get a motion for approval or disapproval?
Motion for approval on the final plat for Five Oaks Farm.
Second.
All in favor? Passes? Montgomery?
Yes, sir, this is the final plat for Wright's Farm, Section 3, off Wright'sboro Road, currently zoned PUD, planned unit development. This shows the location of this section at the west end of the development, just south of Wright'sboro Road. And this section includes 80 single-family lots, minimum lot size of 6,761 square feet, and an average lot size of 8,407 square feet. The required setbacks are seven and a half feet from the side property lines, 10 feet from the rear property lines, and 20 feet from the back of curb per the PUD. However, the plat has increased that front setback to 18 feet from the front property line to accommodate the required distance from the utility lines. Sidewalks are provided on both sides of the roads, and 9.75 acres of open space is provided in this section. Part of that calculation currently includes a stormwater pond, so that, that number is going to change a little bit, but that's what, what's currently on the, the cover sheet. 50-foot buffer is provided on all sides of this development, including along Wright'sboro Road, and there are zoning conditions regarding that buffer along Wright'sboro Road for it to include a privacy fence and some more creative landscaping that, that they'll have to comply with. This shows the existing site. And staff is recommending approval.
And any questions? Get a motion for approval or disapproval?
I make a motion to final plat for Wright's Farm, off Wright'sboro Road.
All in favor? Passes? Montgomery?
Yes, sir, this is a final plat for R. Lewis Construction of Day Road and Summer Place, currently zoned R1, single-family residential. This property was recently rezoned to R1. You can see-
You can see everything around it's R2. This property was originally R2 as well. That would have required extending sewer to this property to develop it. The current plat is proposed to be developed on septic, which is why it was rezoned to R1, was to permit development on septic systems. So the final plat includes five lots with a minimum lot size of 51,998 square feet, which does exceed the 40,000 square foot minimum for the R1 zoning district when it is developed on septic systems. The lots all have frontage on the existing public road and will be served by public water. And staff is recommending approval.
Have any questions? Can I get a motion for approval or disapproval?
Make a motion for final plat on Arlewis Construction.
Second. All in favor? Passes. Hey, we're now in the public hearing section again. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, sir, this is an application for temporary use authorization at 6147 Keoki Drive. This shows the location and the zoning of the property. Again, everything in the surrounding area is zoned RA, residential agricultural. The location of the parcel is a little bit south off of Wright'sboro Road, off of Freeman Harris Road, again on Keoki Drive. This shows an aerial of the site. Again, a temporary use authorization is approval for a temporary primary residence on the property while a permanent primary residence on the property is constructed. So they're they're building a permanent residence on the property. So for the next 12 months, approval of this application would give them use of a camper, travel trailer on the property as the primary residence while construction is completed. The applicant requested that immediately upon being made aware that the temporary use authorization permit was needed as he was already seeking a permit to install electrical on the property to begin work, to install that primary residence. So he's aware that permitting is going to be needed throughout the rest of the construction process and he's expressed confidence that he'll complete that process within the 12-month time limit of the approval of this permit. So staff is recommending approval as well.
Applicant Caesar Forbes, would you like to come forward? State your name and address?
Forbes, 6147 Keoki Drive, just looking for approval so I can have more creature comfort while I'm building.
Yes.
That's about it.
Go ahead.
Sweet. Thank you.
Anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this? Anyone present would like to speak in opposition? And need a motion for approval or disapproval?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the temporary use authorization of 6147 Keoki Drive.
Second.
All in favor? Pass. Ms. Danielle Montgomery?
Yes, sir, this is a request for a major S1 revision at 3432 Gordon Highway for an existing church. The revision is to add a modular classroom and gravel parking to the site. This shows the location of the property on the south side of Gordon Highway at the intersection with Sherillan Drive. And it is currently zoned S1 special. Interestingly, it was originally zoned S1 in 1984 for a ceramics workshop. It was then revised in 1992 to be a church, so it has been zoned for a church use since 1990. This shows the aerial of the site, shows the existing church building. One thing you may notice is that there doesn't appear to be a parking lot on the site. The church currently just parks on the grass around the property. What kind of is driving the the revision request is the desire to add the modular classroom to the site, but we are taking the opportunity to also address parking on the site. Typically, we would require a paved parking lot for a church use like this. The church has requested to be allowed to use gravel for that parking area instead of paving it for budgetary reasons. So this shows the existing church building. And this was the approved concept plan for the the church back in 1990. At that time, the approved concept did include a paved parking lot. Obviously, the the original church there did not install it. This church then took over the building from that original church that got it zoned. They have obviously not installed it either. So the revised concept plan that we are considering with this application includes the new modular classroom to be placed behind the existing church building as well as installation of gravel parking up in this current parking area. They do have some overflow parking shown that would stay grass for for the occasional use, but they have the current parking area that they're requesting to be able to install as gravel. That's not an uncommon request in the more rural areas of the county. We have several other variances that have been approved for churches and even some businesses in rural areas of the county to use gravel parking. So that's not a particular concern to allow gravel in this location. In terms of the modular classroom building, it is going to be placed behind the existing church building. That does put it closer to the neighbor, but it is a classroom building. It's going to be in use primarily Sunday mornings and Wednesday evenings in conjunction with the church services, kind of an occasional use in some respects. It's intended to house 10 to 15 students for classroom use during those times. Usually, we'd probably recommend a buffer there, but that is a 30-foot access easement as well as the church's septic system. Neighbor's driveway runs through there, so there there's not really any space to install a buffer or fence of any kind. And with the the occasional use and the the relatively low occupancy, hopefully it won't impact the neighbor very much. The fire marshal has also noted that the building will have to comply with the fire code regulations, so that will be handled through the building permitting process, which they'll they'll need to complete yet. And the additional modification, they do have a small portion of the building they're requesting to demolish. They'll need demolition permits for that as well, but no particular concerns with them removing that that small portion of the building. So this shows the view behind the church, so this is the portion that would be demolished and then the new modular classroom would sit somewhere in this area behind the church. And here you can see where where kind of their current parking area is at the front of the church, just on the grass. So this is the area where the gravel parking would be installed. In terms of the future development map, it is in the rural neighborhoods character area. It is on the Gordon Highway employment corridor. Both of these allow civic uses such as churches and schools in this character area. The use of the property is not changing, it's going to remain a church. So there, in terms of future development map, it does meet the intent of that plan. So staff is recommending approval with the following condition, please ignore the second one, that is from an older draft, should not be on here. So the only recommended condition is that installation of the gravel primary parking area should take place within one year of the date of approval by the board of commissioners and that a site plan must be submitted and approved prior to any work beginning on the site.
Thank you. The applicant Jeremy Mills would like to speak?
Sir?
Good.
Jeremy Mills, 658 Gibbs Road, South Grove Town. So I'm the pastor here at Promise Church. We love our community. We are serving our community every chance that we get. We are a new church, you probably not have heard about us a whole lot, so we've been here, I think, about six or seven years now. The thing about Promise Church is we are growing and we are growing in the kid department, which is a good thing for a church to have. So we have got more kids than any, I I think there was a service a couple of years ago, we counted more children than adults. So in our current situation, we have a fellowship hall that has a kitchenette or a small kitchen. That's what we serve at Sunday School and that's all we have. And it's not really a Sunday School room, but we we, you know, we make it work. We have outgrown that that fellowship hall, that common area that we use for teaching. So we're asking that this be approved and help us in any way possible. This would greatly, you know, improve our Sunday, Sunday School services for the most part and then our Wednesday nighttime and occasionally whenever we might, you know, need to use it. We also ask, again, that, you know, that ugly piece of the building be taken down. We don't, it's unusable. We also have submitted that we be allowed to put stucco. I know that wasn't mentioned, but I do want to say, we do want to beautify the building for the sake of those who live on Sherillan Drive. Every time they come down there, they can look at the back of that building and I know it's not very pretty compared to what we've done to the front. So just for the cosmetics part of beautifying the community, we want to stucco the back and make it look more unified together as a building. The only question that I do have, and I appreciate everything that was said, my question is, so the fire marshal may or may not approve whatever classroom that we purchase. I will say, we looked into purchasing a brand-new one and they're like $100,000. There's no way. So there's a company in in the Atlanta area that sells them, that was used by public schools or other public departments. So it's already set up for a classroom. I I don't want to purchase a classroom and that's all the way up in Atlanta for it and spend our good, our people's good hard money, you know, and then to say, no, this is not going to work. So my question is, how do I know the fire department is going to up or down that particular used classroom? Because I do not want to waste anybody's time.
Yeah, so what what we would recommend is certainly the the fire marshal would be willing to talk to you about that before you move forward with purchasing the building, you know, what the requirements are, what they need to be looking for. That is a state, state code issue that we're we're not as familiar with. So you need to reach out to the the fire marshal directly to to kind of address what their specific concerns may be.
Yeah, that that was my biggest thing. I didn't want to go purchasing something and have it pulled all the way down there and then for them to, they go park it somewhere else.
I I'd add to that, chances are that there's probably some information that can be passed back and forth between the location where you're looking to purchase it from, the information that the fire marshal would need to reasonably satisfy what their, what any of their concerns might be related to that building. If it's probably been approved for school use, there's a good chance it'll likely be your use, but you would probably need some additional information to confirm that and I'm sure that company can provide that. Kind of work with the fire marshal.
Yeah, and I I appreciate that and I kind of already had in my mind that if the fire marshal said, all right, the particular one that we looked at that we could afford, that if he says, that won't work, but here's the list, you know, do make these modifications and then we could, we could try and go from there.
They're they're pretty, pretty good to work with, so you should be able to figure out how to to get a structure that, you know, can meet the needs.
Thank you. One else here in favor that would like to speak on behalf of, come forward, state your name and address?
Ronaldo Ortiz, 4137 Hepseva, 4137 Johnson-Brads Road in Hepseva, Georgia. Real quickly, I just want to say, the the approval of this modular building as a father and of two children that go to this church, Promise Church, will be significantly great for the church. Just my nine-year-old the other day was like, you know, it's very distracting when you have, trying to listen to the word and then you have people trying to come to the restroom or trying to get a drink of water or something like that, really can't pay attention to what, you know, and then she starts asking me questions and and I have to go back to the teacher to ask them, hey, what were you teaching on so that I can, you know, talk it over with my daughter? So, you know, it I think with the growth that's going on right now at the church, this modular building, an amazing addition, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone present opposed to this addition? Okay? They have a motion for approval with condition or disapproval?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval with condition and file RZ24-02-01, major S1 revision for a 0.99 acre property at 3432 Gordon Highway to add a modular classroom and permit gravel parking.
Second that motion?
All in favor? Passes. Okay, Mr. Dillon, Douglas?
Yes, sir, this is an application for rezoning at 4687 Columbia Road. Just a quick note at the outset that this is a more than 160-acre parcel we're about to discuss that's currently in use as a Girl Scout camp that they're seeking the rezoning. This shows the location of the parcel, north of Columbia Road, west of the intersection of Columbia and Bel Air Road. This shows the zoning of the parcel. Again, right now it's zoned R2, there's a single-family residential zoning. Girl Scout camp doesn't fit, you know, single-family residential use. It's also surrounded on all sides by R2 or R2 and R1 property. Again, all of the, you know, the surrounding property to the south of Columbia Road and on all sides is in single-family residential zoning district. So we have proposed, the narrative submitted for this application proposes, you know, setbacks and buffers appropriate to kind of line up against those single-family residential houses and properties. There'd be 30-foot side setbacks and buffers along all lot lines, not abutting Columbia Road. Again, this is an aerial of the property. Again, you can see in some areas the existing Girl Scout camp facilities, cabins, a swimming pool, sports field, pond for kayaking and an outdoor area down here near the southeastern corner of the property. This is the concept plan, again, showing the entire property, but we have a couple slides where we zoom in a little bit more. Again, so the the color-coded areas are the different activity areas currently existing for the Girl Scout camp. Part of an S1 narrative that we like to have included is, you know, projected growth in the future. All the proposed projected growth for this application is similar uses within the the color-coded areas already. The area is denoted for cabins, they might add additional cabins, they might add additional storage or maintenance buildings. And then there is a section that we'll zoom in even more on here. This is the proposed addition to the building that kind of initiated the need for rezoning. This is the 6,000-square-foot proposed new building. The owners of this property are the the Georgia chapter of the Girl Scouts of America. They are currently leasing office space in Richmond County for their full-time staff. They own this property, again, that is north of 160 acres at least, so they're looking to move their full-time staff into this new proposed building. All the existing facilities on the property are served by septic and well systems, but they have sewer and water available at this building. They're also going to pave enough parking to go along with the facilities that will be located in this building, which also includes a multipurpose use area that they're calling a dream center. Just as they already have the facilities for the camp to work on outdoor badge activities, they want to match that by developing an indoor space where they can also work on badge activities within this building to go along with the offices that they're proposing as well. And so it's an office and a multipurpose building, all included within this building. And also, I mentioned before, the 30-foot setbacks along all other property lines to go with a a natural buffer along all those lot lines. Here at the lot line along Columbia Road, there's a 55-foot setback from that lot line to aid kind of keeping that office building off of the streetscape there and visible at Columbia Road. The topo also aids in that as well, but there's an emphasis both on the county side and on the applicant's side to keep things on this property, obviously it being a Girl Scout camp looking natural. And so the proposed building actually is proposed with architectural elements like lots of exterior wood blend into the surrounding natural property that currently exists. That's highlighted by the fact that the, it's in the open space character area on our development map. A big emphasis for this character area is on maintaining natural space. And so the Girl Scout camp generally fits that concept as well. We can understand them wanting to move their office building onto the, such a large parcel. And so given all of these factors, staff is recommending approval of this application.
Thank you. Jeff Wilson, would you like to come forward and speak?
Jeff Wilson, 726 Greenfield Abbey Court in Martinez. I'm here to represent Girl Scouts. They're the owner of the property and as Dylan explained perfectly, I mean, it's actually 184 acres. It's been a camp for Girl Scouts since 1942 years. We don't have any intentions of doing anything but continuing to run it as a camp. So it's really to move an office, we want to build an office there. We started a capital campaign back in the fall to start gathering the funds and we're working with an architectural firm and a contractor and we'd like to go forward with that and that's where I came and had a preliminary meeting and we started these discussions about either carving out that front area off of Columbia Road or going and taking the whole property and using this opportunity to do, let everybody see exactly what's there. So that's what led us to this point, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer
Um, we'll have somebody just a second.
Thank you. Thank you.
But here, that would like to speak in favor still? Anyone opposed? Just state your, state your name and address, please.
Sean Caraway, resident of Orchard Hill, which is kind of attached to the entrance there. I'm really not opposed quite yet. I just have one question about the proposal, whether a building being built would have a separate entrance coming off of Columbia Road, or would it, would entry into that building come off of the main entryway to the neighborhood as well?
What he's pointing out is, Dylan, or can someone point on the large map for people to see? But on Shepherd's Way on the side is the, basically the main entrance, thank you, to the camp. But we would be utilizing new entrance off of Columbia Road. So you can see in one of the aerial views that there's already a gravel entrance there, paved, so we would just have to widen that and then put that structure out there. So no one's going to drive from this office back into the camp or come from the camp.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Opposed to this?
Chairman, members of the board, audience, I am also a resident of the Orchard Hill subdivision, Joseph Pagnato, forty-eight forty-five Orchard Hill Drive. The same question. The sole ingress and egress of this location is Shepherd's Way. That feeds the Orchard Hill subdivision, Columbia County Water Processing Plant, and the existing Girl Scout camp. So we were just concerned if a retail business or support goes in this area, was everyone going to be driving through toward our neighborhood to get into this area? You've now explained it'll be off Columbia Road. I would just ask the board to consider, now seeing that, because it's a great answer and I support this project. Columbia Road is a high-speed avenue of approach. We presently have a breakdown lane that Columbia County put in so we can get into Orchard Hill without getting hit at a forty-five mile an hour rear impact to go in there. This concept drawing probably should show a breakdown lane so people can slow down and turn into your facility without a rear-end collision. I support the project. Thank you very much for your time. Unless you have a question for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, hold on.
That's a DOT road, right?
It is. And so that, what'll happen is, they'll make that decision once we determine how many people will be in this office and how the frequency of people coming in and out of this location. So GDOT will have to decide that. And I want everybody to know that this, this concept is, Girl Scouts has no desire for this office to be right on top of the camp. So that's the purpose of staying out close to Columbia Road and having the setbacks and following staff recommendations on keeping it natural-looking, and not have it be tied to the camp, so to speak. Keep those separate.
Building and the camp? Seeing something looks like a road, but I'm not sure it is.
There's, you mean, as it goes down along Crawford Creek?
Through your property.
Yeah, there is, there is one along Crawford Creek. You can see, it's a gravel drive, and the rest of those are loops that go all around the whole property. There's a five-k run setup in there, and it goes through all of their little camphouses and all. So there will still be a road. There's the maintenance people that are out there. We have a ranger on staff, and they've got golf cars and all, so they'll be able to access through there, but it won't actually be cars driving down there.
I've been there eighty years.
Eighty-two years.
Eighty-two.
Yeah.
And I've been here a while. I've never noticed it was there.
It's, a lot of people don't know it's there. So, and that's our desire to keep it that, that natural. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone else would like to speak? State your name and address, please.
Backburnside, forty-eight oh six Orchard Hill Drive. What I would like to know, with the new building coming in for the Girl Scouts and so forth, I understand that also they'll be using that as a commercial thing to sell cookies and type things like this out of there. And I wonder with that, with the rezoning, will that allow other businesses to be brought in on the same property to do the same type of thing? We already have such an overload of traffic, as all of y'all already know, up and down Columbia Road. And there's been so many wrecks in all here lately, which you red light. I tried to get one put up at Shepherd's Way ten years ago, and couldn't get it done. And we still had deaths there. So I just wonder how much more traffic this gonna allow in there, how many more businesses will be allowed to go in there once you rezone the property, what it is now to a more larger area.
Mr. Wilson, how many people do y'all employ, does the Girl Scouts employ that would be coming to the office on a daily basis, the employees?
Six full-time employees.
Six?
Well, what about in the near future, though, if you plan to expand the property to add on more businesses in there, after that nature to the Girl Scout area with a hundred and eighty-something acres in there?
Well, our, our plan is not to change anything that's away from a Girl Scout camp, so we have no desire to put anything in apartments or anything like that. It's just to have an office, to have the staff that's there. And I don't foresee us ever having more than maybe three, four time staff people. And then really, to Dylan's explanation, we want this two thousand square foot within that six thousand square foot. Have a dream center where the Girls... That's the purpose of that, and the only other expansions that we explained going forward would be cabins and more structures, maybe storage and things around.
I can understand that in a certain way, but after eighty-four years, now all of a sudden, we're going to start expanding to put more cabins in, when a few years ago, added a house, and now put a custodian's at. Have all this traffic up and down Shepherd's Way coming into the waterworks and everything. Have a lot of people using it out of what out camp.
Well, it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, but Dylan has been helping me through this process, that going to S one doesn't, doesn't skip over the fact that if we came forward and wanted to do something else on this property, we're still going to have to come... Explanation of what we're doing.
I was going to explain, on the county side, the reason zoning is to S one, so that, you know, what's included in it, and being rezoned to C two, our additional... S one is being... Office and multipurpose building, camp activities, dock room, thought of that as well. Our plan is shown in the open space, not any kind of, not intended. And it's not allowed.
Thank you.
I think I would add to that, that, you know, based on the narrative and based on what they're proposing, while there may be, you know, some additional cabins that could be developed down the road, I think any, you know, major structures, point of, you know, adding another building of six thousand square feet or eight thou, you know, those would likely come back through this process. They would have to come back through this process and go for another approval, rather than just by right giving them additional buildings for commercial activities, whether it's for the Girl Scouts or for anybody else. That would be something that we would bring back through this process.
I was just going to start to understand what I had when I was in Richmond County. Of course, I understand all the scouts were relocated. Times, if a profit is, same thing, all of a sudden, all public buildings, businesses coming in, same property line, as in that too, plus what we already had is private areas like our neighborhood. Right now, we only have one way in, out of Orchard Hill. That's right. And anything that, making a lot more traffic, thing that could cause hazards or anything like that, like fire department, some emergency vehicle, out of whatever, impact on people's lives, that's what I'm looking at.
Thank you. Anybody else? Our last one.
Name is Fred McIntyre. I'm the president of the Shoal Creek Homeowners Association up in... The only question I had was, how many stories are this building? One story?
AB two. We haven't gotten a final architectural plan. Trying to hold to one.
The other question I have is Service Road that runs up around, going over towards Hickory. Shoal Creek runs and develops in this area.
You can touch the screen.
I can touch it?
Yeah, you can touch it, and it'll draw.
Service Road, Shoal Creek is in this area.
It comes close to a couple of those houses.
Right, right. Is there any plans to clear any of this woods, woodlands out of here?
I don't think so, no. Our desire is to, we're only going to clear...
Okay.
Actually, staff was recommending I am too. You know, they took some out up in here, saw, and they've added some over the last year, but from here on, has not been touched, and it's not...
Okay. Yeah, that's that Service Road. Very good. The only other question I had was, and I believe you just answered that, was when it rezoned to S one, if there's any other retail or anything to go in here, that's not part of this. They'd have to come back for another request. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Buy Girl Scout cookies right now. Now you're talking. Okay. Do I have a motion for approval or disapproval?
I make a motion to recommend approval of the file RZ two four dash zero two dash zero two rezoning from R two to S one for a hundred and sixty-three point one acre property at forty-six eighty-seven Columbia Road for a continued, as a Girl Scout camp and a new office and multipurpose building.
Okay. All in favor? Passes. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Favor? Thank you. Do-si-do.